Good morning.
Can you please get close to the mics? It's being recorded on the Internet.
I just want to make sure I can face everybody in the room and they can all see me. So, my name's Trent Ogilvy. I am the President of Rockwell's business in North America, insulation business in North America, and I have held that job for 23 years. I have to admit that I am sitting here very nervous and uncomfortable. I have never faced this kind of reaction to my company or our group. However, I thank you for inviting me in. I have been to Jefferson County many, many times. It is a beautiful place. We have talked a lot, and I'm talking again now, but obviously, we have not done a very good job of listening and getting in dialogue with the community. So, as an opening statement, I will just tell you that we will do a better job of that, and I will work very hard on that. We've heard a lot of concerns in the community, and I've been here with you for the last little bit, hearing more, but the majority of the comments really fall under three topics that I want to discuss today, knowing I only have a few minutes of your time. So, I'm going to talk about air quality, I'm going to talk about water, and I'm going to talk about what Rockwell is like in a community. I need you to advance my slides for me. So, the main issues seem to be volatile organic compounds, one of which is formaldehyde. So, let me address formaldehyde first. It's the slide, please. So, there's a lot of numbers on this chart, and there's a unit of measure on this chart, which is micrograms per meter cubed. It doesn't matter, the unit's the same for every number. It's a thousandth, it's a millionth of a gram per meter cubed. So, the big number up there is .23, and that's what this factory in Ransson will contribute to the closest school to our factory, .23. And put that in perspective to some of the other numbers on that chart. As we exhale, our breath contains one, microgram per meter cubed. In an urban area, you can have up to 20. West Virginia doesn't have a standard or limitation for formaldehyde, but Virginia does, so we compared with Virginia, the neighboring state, and it's 2.4. So, we're 10 times lower than the Virginia standard. And World Health Organization, which is WHO, their guideline for indoor air quality is 98, so .23, 98. So, that's indoor air quality of a room like we're in today. So, trying to put in perspective just how small the number is compared to human breath and the neighboring state standard. There's also talk of phenol and methanol. We have assessed the concentrations of those components as well. Again, West Virginia doesn't have limitations, but Virginia does, so we're just going to state the fact of how they compare. Phenol is 1% of the limit, methanol is 0.1% of the limit. So, again, very small and negligible. Finally, I would like to address ozone. People talk about ozone, and just to set the record straight, our factory doesn't emit ozone, okay? The components of some of the things that we emit can form ozone in the atmosphere, and you can see our contribution to this ambient air is going to be 1 part per billion. That's it. The Berkeley monitor, which I heard mentioned earlier, regularly measures 60 to 66 parts per billion. So, 1 versus 66. Now, before I go to the next slide, I've presented, you know, four components that impact air quality, tried to show how small and negligible the numbers are, and I know that not everybody wants to take that as fact. We're going to keep working and communicating and showing. There's also concern about schools, and what about schools? And before I get to that discussion, I also want to say, we will cooperate with any third-party, independent party. We are going to install air monitors in the community and the surrounding community. We will have any independent people that would like to participate and make sure we put them in the most critical areas. We're not going to be upwind, downwind, so they will go where it is most critical, and we'll ensure there's independent participation in that. We will also join and endorse the school board, who has written this week about wanting an independent health risk assessment. So, we won't do it, but we will certainly assist in whatever we can to do that. So, we're not required to do that by our permit, but we are listening, and we will engage in those two activities. So, I've shown the components that impact air quality and how low, but I also want to relate to schools in a different way. On the screen is a map of Milton, Ontario. It's a suburb outside Toronto. Up in the top of the screen, you can see the word "Rockwell." That is our factory location. The two circles, one is a one-mile radius, the other is a three-mile radius. The red dots are the schools in the town of Milton. You will see, if you count them up, there are seven red dots in a one-mile radius. There are 24 in a three-mile radius, as well as our local hospital, and you can see the three-mile radius bumps up against our green space, which is the Niagara Escarpment and Bruce Trail, which is another beautiful place in the world. So, we have been there for 30 years manufacturing these products. We have two production lines there. They're much older than we'll be building here. We have never had an issue with a school or a health issue with anybody in the community. So, the other topic I wanted to address was water, and specifically wastewater and what comes out of the factory, and I was happy to even hear some of those questions expressed today. This is a very clear story that really shouldn't be misinterpreted. There will be no, none wastewater, processed wastewater discharged from this factory into rivers, streams, sewers, or the ground.
What do you do with it?
Then there was a question, I heard it, "What do you do with it?" So, we recycle our processed water. A lot of water evaporates through our production process, which is why we still take city water in. The only water that's going in the sewer is from our toilets, our sinks, and our purification process has some residual water. So, that's the water that will go out into the sewer system. So, that is the fact of the matter. Next slide, please. So, I want to wrap up the prepared slides just with some more comments about Milton, Ontario. Instead of a map, this is a photograph of our factory in the background, looking the same way that the map was looking. You can see the residential area across the street from us. There's been a lot of talk of what's the impact that we have in a community, and do we drive down house prices? And that's simply not the case after being in Milton for 30 years, and as I said, I've been there 23. Milton is one of Canada's fastest-growing communities, and the fastest-growing community in Ontario. The median income continues to rise, and the median age continues to decline, meaning young people are settling in Milton and raising their families. Property value over the last 20 years has gone up four times. So, the notion that our factory is impacting the prosperity and economic well-being of that town isn't founded, and in fact, we're a very proud part of that community. So, last slide, that's it for me. I just want to remind everybody, I was given only a few minutes to speak. I tried to present what we heard as the most important points, but we are having a community open house next week, four of them. Those are the dates and the times. We'll have many more people, many more experts. It's not going to be a presentation like this, it'll be different information booths that you can walk around to and the subject you're interested in are all subjects. We've tried to do as many times as possible. It's at the Jefferson County Community Center, and I hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Milton has different weather patterns. How about your plant closed away? 336 people died there.
Can we take one at a time, please?
Landing Canada is more expensive.
Are you even accepting questions?
I'll accept questions.
Okay. But please raise your hand and let him call on you.
The question, just in case everybody didn't hear it, was about the plant in Croatia. So, we have 45 production lines around the world, and in 39 countries, 11,000 employees making our stone wool insulation. We have a factory in Croatia that also underwent some discussion and some protest 10 or so years ago. There's some misinformation out there with pictures of stacks and smoke, which is actually cloud, because that is in a valley, if you know inversion and stuffs. Yeah. So, the fact is that we went through that, a lot of community dialogue, a lot of community dialogue like this with people, and today, we operate that factory in full production in harmony with that community, and like we do everywhere else. Yes?
My name's Christine Wymer. Thank you for coming. My question was, you didn't address small particulate matter when you talked about the air quality. If you're not putting water into the sewer, why do you need? I understand you're flushing the toilets, but what else do you need the sewer for so badly? What are you putting in the sewer if it's not water? And then my biggest thing is, according to the Halton Regional Health Department air quality, air monitoring report from 2011, and they've done it every year since then, the reason they commissioned the study was that 336 people died in Halton, which contains Milton and two other small cities, due to smog-related deaths. And that is not my explanation, that's from the study. And so, you said that you don't affect the health of the people there, so you're saying that the air pollutants that you put out do not contribute to the death of those 336 people each year?
So, the first question on PM 2.5, I didn't have the data, but for sure, we will have the data in the open houses and show you in various concentration rings where it goes, so we will do that for sure. Regarding Halton region and its health statistics, I think, I'm not an expert, if you've read them, but I think they're actually lower than the province of Ontario. However, if the ministry decided to do that because of smog-related concerns, I don't know if anybody's been to the city of Toronto, it's 4 million people, yeah, there's lots of smog and highways there, and our emissions like here are just a very negligible amount of that.
They decided to study Milton because of the problem there. It says that in the study.
Yeah. I will look that. Sorry, back, sorry.
Yeah, hi, I'm Chris Canadian. I just had a question about how apt Milton is to compare. Canadian data for 2017 is that Milton will produce just 29 tons of PM 2.5, should say just, but 29 tons versus you got a permit here for 133 tons, so it's almost five times different. So, similarly, Milton doesn't produce any formaldehyde, as far as we can tell from the Canadian data, and you're permitted to emit 67 tons here. And then the second piece of that is, is the Canadian regulatory regime different than the regulatory regime in the US?
Yeah, so, good questions, and we'll make sure that we have data at the open house that shows actual emissions versus permitted emissions for the operating factories, Mississippi, Milton, et cetera, because in fact, the actual emissions are a lot lower than we're permitted for, and the Canadian-US regulations are different, and I can tell you, it's more stringent here. So, yeah, it's different. Yes?
I did listen to you this morning on WRNR radio, and I heard you say that the Sierra Club is opposing this, perhaps as if only the Sierra Club were here protesting this and asking questions. I'd like to see a show of hands of anyone here in the room who is in fact in the Sierra Club. Well, just a couple of us. The rest of the people in this room are all part of the group called Citizens Concerned About Rockwell Ransson, which is a brand-new group of people who were typically not involved in environmental movements previously, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear also to the county commission, since it probably wasn't clear to the thousands of people who've heard you say that on the radio this morning.
You know, I'm really glad you corrected me on that and told me that in the hallway earlier today. The why I mentioned that this morning on the radio is that I was asked if we'd reached out to any of the people that were protesting, and as far as I knew, that was the Sierra Club. I'm glad to see there's another group, because my point was, we've invited them to meet us, speak with us, which they've turned down. So, if your group would like, then I'd be welcome to meet with you and your group.
Thank you. So, I have, a lot of us have an issue of trust, and I think you understand that, and that's why you're here today, is you're trying to gain our trust. I've looked at your stormwater permit for construction, which is required by the state to look at impacts of just the construction on erosion and sedimentation, impacts on the landscape. It states in that document that the receiving watershed is the Apeckin Creek, which actually isn't true, it's a different watershed. And it actually states in that document that source water areas and wellheads areas are unknown, when in fact, there's a source water protection area for the town of Shepherdstown, and your plant is within that watershed and within that watershed protection area. So, how can we trust what you're saying going forward when you didn't even take the time to do the due diligence to understand what watershed you're in?
Well, that is news to me, and it's quite surprising news to me, so without the details of that permit and what you're saying, we will respond to that, and I will try to clarify, because that's not us. We are transparent, open, and comply with every thing we do, so.
I'm sitting here.
Hi.
I would like to make a statement of something you just said just a few minutes ago, which does show me that your company is not...
Susan, you're probably not being heard on the air. You need a microphone.
Right there.
I would like to make a statement of a few things that you just said a few minutes ago, and it shows me that your company is not doing the research that they should say. First of all, our life here should never be compared to Canadian life, period. Not that I have anything against Canadians, but I did grow up in Germany, and we shouldn't be compared to that either, so I'm very familiar with Denmark as well. You stated that their property value went up, what, four times? Well, again, you don't know our county. I've been here 14 years, and my property value still hasn't gone up from the time that I bought my house, something that, if you come here, you really think my property value is going to go up four times? Do you think your property value is going to go up four times?
Going down.
Even once? No, I don't think so. So, also, 150 jobs have been promised, which I doubt very seriously that even 80% of that's going to go to the local West Virginians. But, on top of that, and I think I'm losing my train of thought here, the 150 people that supposedly get their jobs that are promised, as you already heard from this crowd, and crowds, and more and more people are speaking out, there are going to be a lot more than 150 people leaving. The beekeeper that is going to lose her job and her bees, she has to take them out of this county. People that own horses, so a lot of business, a lot of people that just moved here, a lot more than 150 people, and the people that wanted to move here are not coming. They're not coming, so, thank you.
Just on the jobs, we did promise 150 jobs, which we will for sure create. Mississippi, I think we're up to 260. If five or six of those are brought in from outside, that would be it, the rest will be local hire, so it's, these are local jobs.
Yeah, I've been on your Facebook page, and I've read that you held community meetings long before today in our community. I never saw any announcements of those. I keep asking on your Facebook page, give me a list of the meetings, give me a list of the mailing list that you sent all these mailers to, the residents right around your proposed factory site. I don't get any answers. So, I'll ask you, how many meetings did you hold in the county with citizens of Republic? What's the mailing list? Can we have copies of the mailers? I just keep getting referred to the upcoming meetings. I want to know what happened before today.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. If we just get your contact information, we'll send you all that. Well, then, we'll post it somewhere, yeah, yeah.
Post it on your Facebook.
Yeah, I have some people here in the room that are keeping track of things that I say and promise, so, they'll do it. Sorry.
All right, so I have a question about your slide, the community slide. Tessie, if you wouldn't mind pulling that slide back up, it's like two slides back, please. Right there, perfect. Okay, so let's, just for fun, just pick a fact a little bit here. When we present data to any of these boards, we cite our sources. I don't see any sites for your sources for this information, and let me tell you why I'm concerned, and the rest of the group, you can chime in if you want. Property values, as you just mentioned just a minute ago, property value four times multiple over 20 years, what was that, like a 0.1% growth over 20 years? Was that like in that trajectory? Like, where's your data? Where's your chart? Same thing with median age, it continues to drop. By how much? What's the median age of the 20? Let me see your data. Site source.
Yeah, okay. Good points. And, you know, normally, we are very strict on source citation, and we will do that for this data, show you the numbers. It's there, it's, we were given 10 minutes, so I didn't put all the charts and graphs up, but they're all qualified sources, and we'll provide that.
I think the median age is 36 or something.
Sorry, at the back.
I had a friend forward some questions to me, if I had the opportunity. Why did Rockwell not consider the following counties in West Virginia, Plutnam, Penal, Cobble, Wayne, or Wood? Was it because 45 CSR 21 and 29 would require Rockwell to monitor, control, and report VOC emissions, but they are not required to do so in Jefferson County? A wet scrubber or high-efficiency venturi scrubber are the most efficient technologies to reduce particle pollution. You chose not to use them entirely on cost. Afterburner recuperative and regenerative thermal oxidizer technologies are more efficient at removing VOCs, but you chose simply to use low-combustion practices, to save money. No wastewater treatment will be conducted at the plant. Disposal of a liquid or slurry waste product would have significant costs. So, will the cost be passed on to Ransson and C-Tub sewer customers to handle?
A lot of questions were asked there. Maybe working backwards, I just addressed the water issue. There's no affluent or water discharge from our process here, so that's clear. And the other one, sorry? About the technology for...
I was in a cooperative, regenerative thermal oxidizers technologies are more efficient at removing VOCs, but you chose simply to use combustion practices.
Well, I don't know the technology enough to speak to, you're speaking to, but we have what's considered state-of-the-art and best-available abatement equipment on it, and I can tell you, and if you attend the open house, you'll be able to see what it looks like and see what it does. It's not simple combustion, that's for sure.
It said, why did Rockwell not consider the following counties in Georgia?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Plutnam, Penal, Cobble, Wayne, or Wood? Was it because 45 CSR 21 and 29 would require Rockwell to monitor, control, and report VOC emissions, but they're not required in Jefferson County?
That's a question that's also good, because I don't know that that's true. I don't know what the regulation that you're sourcing, I mean, it's a state, we work with the state D.P., we will monitor and track and report our VOCs. When we went looking for a factory location, I think we had 57 expressions of interest in the greater mid-Atlantic market, and Jefferson County was very inviting and ended up winning that site selection.
And then the last question was, wet scrubber or high-efficiency venturi scrubber are the most efficient technologies to reduce particle pollution, but they're not, you didn't choose to use them in this project.
I think if you look a little deeper, which will show at our open house, our technology, abatement technology, you can see it's very sophisticated and the best in the world, and certainly not a cost decision that we made. Sorry, right there.
Yeah, you've been talking about all the visits. With whom in Jefferson County did you negotiate this deal? Who was your primary point of contact in Jefferson County? Who, when you announced the winner, who did you first announce that to in Jefferson County, that we had been chosen by you? Who got, per people, I'm asking people, not institutions, because we have a lot of people saying that they have no power, they have no responsibility, they have no accountability, so we really need to find the people in Jefferson County with whom you did this deal. So, if you could share the names of those people with us, please?
Well, I might not have every name on the tip of my tongue, but I will tell you how it worked. You have an economic development authority that is out there looking for economic development and people to come to the county, so when we're looking for a site, that's where we start. We're then introduced to the city, to the state, and we work with all those parties to figure out if there's a fit for our manufacturing and what they want, so.
You have a lot of visits here, and you really spent a lot of time, but you can't call a name of a person.
Well, there's lots of names in all those groups, but I mean, if you want all the names we've worked with, we'll be glad to produce that. That's not a, we're not...
We know that, we would like to know who negotiated the deal. Is that who it is? Yeah, everybody says it wasn't them, that nobody here in Jefferson County is responsible for you being here, but somebody had to negotiate the deal. You did not negotiate the deal with a roomful of people. You had a point of contact.
We had a point of contact at the development authority, and John, who was running the development authority at the time?
Hook, you would know.
Yeah, I didn't want to miss, I didn't, yeah, I didn't want to mispronounce his name. And of course, the state has economic development people, I think it's Todd Hooker would have been the lead there. And the city, of course, your mayor, and Andy Blake, you know, the city of Ransson, so, I apologize, so, if it's not your mayor...
Can you give a cordial, please?
So, those are the main people, but of course, it was a roomful of people covering a lot of different topics, and we, so, happy, sorry, somebody hasn't got a question in yet. Yeah, thanks.
So, obviously, this county isn't wanting you guys to, we don't want you to build your factory. That's very apparent. We just found out a few weeks ago, and the numbers are growing every day of people that are in opposition to this. My question is, what is it going to take for us to get you to pack up and leave our county and go do this somewhere else? You have not started building, so what do we need to do to make this stop and to make you go elsewhere? Because now, the community has spoken in numbers, in mass numbers, saying, "We don't want you here," and we have, we're organized, we have money for lawyers, we're doing everything we need to do to make sure this doesn't happen. So, what do we need to do to get you to go elsewhere?
Yeah, that's a hard question, but, you know, I've been on the radio and television a lot in the last two weeks, and I've been asked that question, so I'm not going to change my answer. That isn't one of the scenarios or options we're looking at. What we are trying to do is communicate with all of you and everybody else as thoroughly and factually as we can, with the hope that you will change your point of view on this operation, and there's no need not to build.
Plan on building the factory, yes? To stop what you're doing.
Correct, we plan on building the factory, yes. Correct, we plan on building the factory, yes.
Let me just ask that question slightly differently. Are you willing, are you willing to build a factory such as this? The disruption that it will bring and the strike that it will create within this community? Are you willing to build this factory in a community that is wholeheartedly opposed to you doing that? You willing to do that?
What I'm really willing to do as first and foremost, is what I'm trying to do here today and will continue to do as long as it takes, is to create the dialogue and give you the facts that you will be welcoming. Maybe not every one of you, I don't expect to change everybody's mind, but I hope if you look at our facts and our track record of who we are, that we will be welcomed. So, that's how I answer that question. Sorry, in the red shirt.
Yes, sir. Actually, three-part question. Number one, how much, I see you posted up earlier about the formaldehyde and methanol. How much are you pumping out an hour? Because you have a 200-foot smokestack and I'm not the smartest person, I wasn't trained in this, but I was told in layman's terms, the taller the smokestack, the more lethal the chemical coming out because they need a bigger dispersion area. Second, you're dealing with an inversion because you're in a valley, you're in the north end of the Shenandoah Valley. So, it's just going to sit here until a big wind or something shifts and it's just going to sit in this area and it's going to look like all the pictures from Grand Forks. Everybody goes, oh, that's clouds. No, that's the emission from that tall smokestack. And third, are you putting profits before people? You want to be a partner of the community. You know we're in an inversion area, it's just going to sit here, it's going to affect the children, it's going to affect everybody's livelihood, the livestock, the agriculture, and people with other problems. I have COPD, I have early onset COPD. It's going to affect me. So, you're choosing to put profits over people because you're not doing the best, you're not coming out with the best information. This is all, I've seen games like this played. I was in the federal government and I've seen how we only put out a limited amount, but we omit what we need to tell everybody.
Well, three questions and I can assure you, we're not trying to be anything but transparent and put all that. So, if you'd like to know it per hour or in any other measure, we'll be sure to cover that next week. I don't have that at my fingertips. Grand Forks, if you've looked at Grand Forks, it's an interesting factory. It is in the mountains, right in a valley, and they do have inversion. And in fact, when we first bought that factory in 1999, it was old and it needed a lot of upgrade and so, there could be some pictures and articles out there when our stack plume went up and hung in the valley. That's probably out there, it's a good point. In 2005, a few years after I bought it, and this is a small factory, I think my investment was around $10 million to put in what's called a WESP, which is a very high-tech abatement equipment and that problem was eliminated. This factory will have a WESP as well.
I just saw that John Stumpf was the attorney who negotiated the deal with you. Is there any way to renegotiate this deal? Anybody like to comment on that question?
Sorry, I don't know who, what firms John Stumpf with? I don't recognize that name.
Steptoe and Johnson.
Hmm?
Steptoe and Johnson.
I have to check, sorry. Our local attorney firms, I don't know them off the top of my head. Back, sorry.
If you're so, were so interested in transparency, why did you publish the list of toxic chemicals that we are supposed to live with on the day before Thanksgiving when nobody was paying attention to the small local lives? Why in the world would you be so transparent? Was this not made public or the public?
Yeah, I apologize for that Thanksgiving thing.
Or why are you, sorry, I have the other question. Why was this not, why was this done in such an obviously sneaky way? When you continue to say we draw on transparency, we simply can't possibly believe that because it's not true.
Yeah, well, perhaps we made a mistake on publishing on Thanksgiving, but we are about transparency. We did have the ad and the permit was out there in the public. So, as I said, we've learned, these are the same sort of ways we did it in Mississippi and in Toronto when we built a new line there. So, obviously, we didn't go far enough here, but I can assure you, we will.
Yes.
Sorry. Yep.
I just wanted to say, previously, when my friend here asked if you would consider leaving and you said that that's not an option in the plans, when you say to us, when you say that, maybe you don't realize how that sounds, but that sounds like to us that you're saying that you're interested in sitting down with us and you're interested in hearing our concerns. When you say that, what we hear is, you're interested in our audience so that you can convince us of your point of view. Those are two very different things. So, now, all of us have heard that you're not interested in our concerns, you're just interested in our audience so that you can convince us of your point of view. So, if you find in the studies that you're doing, the other thing is, I'm a scientist. When you do a study, if you bias yourself to the outcome, then the study is no good. And so, if your hypothesis, if the hypothesis you've already accepted is that you're not going to affect us, then that's what you're going to find. If you've decided that you're going to stay here no matter what, then no matter what the outcome of those studies are, those studies are useless. What if your studies find that the amount of particulate matter that reaches the racetrack will negatively affect those horses and it will negatively affect the largest industry in our county and the oldest industry in our county that is still here? You're still going to come? You don't care about us that much?
Actually, I, actually, I don't look at it that way. We will, we will welcome independent studies. I said they will be, the school board wants to do it or anyway.
But you're going to build anyways.
And I think, as you know, sorry, we went to visit you at the racetrack last week. We took your concerns very seriously. We will get the best science we can to show you the issue. So, we are listening and we will try to give you the data you need to. So, it's not of, I don't want to convey we're not leaving and that's it. I want to convey that I want to answer all your questions. I want you to give enough facts, sources, independence that you accept it and realize we're not harming the community.
Mr. Ogilvy, I would like to move on with our agenda. There's public meetings coming up to address Rockwell, but we have more business we have to conduct today. Thank everybody for coming out, asking questions. Thank you for answering them. Thank you.
Thank you.